If you wish to speak on an agenda or non-agenda item, please sign up on the sheet near the entrance door to the council chambers. You may call to speak during the public comment section. Comments or testimonies on agenda items listed under public hearing. Public comment will be taken at that time. Roll call, please.
Dick Anderson?
Here.
Riley Hoagland?
Here.
Deanna Hinton?
Here.
Judy Casper?
Here.
Susan Walke?
Here.
Kip Ward?
Here.
And Don Williams?
Here. Would you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna break from the pattern here, just in case there were some folks, as I understand, on social media who might be under the impression we'll be awarding outside-agency checks tonight and such. That is not happening. We can't do any of that until we approve the budget, and then we have to have an outside-agency meeting. So if anyone was here thinking checks are coming out tonight, we won't be having any of that. So you're welcome to hang around, but didn't want to disappoint anybody. And then we are going to, with council's approval, move, what was it, Ron?
Item number 11.
J-11. We're gonna move up near the top here, probably right after comments. That work? Right after E?
Yes.
Okay. Is that okay, counsel? Okay. All right. Consent agenda. Minutes of the meeting, May 22, 2017. Disposition and acceptance of real property transfer Ballard Building, Lincoln City Glass Studio, and disposition and acceptance of real property transfer D-Lake School Building, Lincoln City Cultural Center.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing, none. Motion carries. Thank you. I didn't have to break those down individually, right? It's all good. Okay. Comments from citizens present on agenda, non-agenda items. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to bring to the council's attention any item not listed on the agenda for public hearing or public comment. Comments are limited to five minutes per citizen, and the city recorder will use the light system. Speakers may not yield their times to others, and in, and as a general rule, this is not a time for exchange of questions. At the conclusion of this agenda item, a counselor may discuss and raise questions regarding an item presented by a citizen. The mayor has the authority to reduce the time allowed for comment in accordance with the number of persons present and signed up to speak. We are gonna start off with Georgia Roloff.
Georgia Roloff, Lincoln City. I want, once again, to bring to the attention of the city council the need for painting the edge of the cement dividers that identify some left-turn lanes, such as the one at 21st, Northwest 21st Street, as well as those that separate the north and south lanes on Highway 101. In March 10 of 2016, I wrote my first email to Mr. Chandler requesting that the painters be, the dividers be painted. In May of 16, reflectors and upright stanchions were added to the dividers. Unfortunately, the stanchion soon fell over and disappeared. The reflectors, which were placed on the top of the dividers, have limited value during the daytime. At the very least, painting the leading edge of these dividers bright yellow will make them far more visible than they currently are. This is very important as we approach the summer traffic and the August eclipse event. We will need every traffic aid possible to make our town as safe as possible. It's been over a year since the stanchions, which fell over, were installed, instead of painting the highway dividers yellow. I sincerely believe that painting the dividers yellow will make Lincoln City a safer environment for our citizens as well as our tourists. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Warner? Is Jerry here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Let's see what you signed up for.
My name is Jerry Warner, and I live at 1233 Lakewood. I have a question. I haven't been able to get much information from anybody in regards to, the city spent $50,000 replacing a private ownership dock on southeast Tide Street. And actually, from the information I received, it's not a park. And there's no parking there whatsoever. And I guess probably one of the biggest issues is it doesn't meet in any form, fashion, ADA requirements. I went to the ADA man up here, and I asked him. He said, well, he was only involved in, basically, existing violations. And I said, well, who does the new installations? He says, I guess, I'm not real sure, but I guess probably the building inspector does the ADA inspection. So, anyway, I have a real problem about this in respect that the railing that there is, I mean, it's, it's really a disaster. There's an old trailer frame left down there in the water, and it's on city property, and I just wondered why the city didn't remove that trailer frame while they were rebuilding the dock. Now, I understand that Bill Sexton rebuilt the dock out there, and, and then later, a city crew went in there and built the walkway, which is about 100 feet long. And that walkway, no way, under any circumstances, would pass ADA requirements. I guess that's my question to the council, and somebody could give me an answer on that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Jerry. I don't have an answer. But I'll find out.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry, you're on twice. Is that for the public hearing later?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And David Elton?
Mr. Mayor, David Elton. I actually live on Tide Street, but that's kind of a new issue to me. I don't know about it, but I'll be looking into it. You see behind me sitting Patrick Alexander of the Oregon Coast Today, and Richard Music, who, he and I served on a board of directors together for homeless issues. And as you know, Mr. Mayor guided me toward the first of two donations where I and my family donated to warming shelters, or specifically, our warming shelter. I don't know if either of these gentlemen are gonna testify tonight, but as you know, that's something that we believe in and that we want to support. Now, whether or not, you know, one of my questions about the warming shelter is that when the temperatures get down to 35 or below, that's when they are activated. I've often thought, and I've testified before, that if we raise that to 45 or 50 degrees, 50, you know, is a pretty high level, but if it's 40 or 45 degrees, I think you can help a lot more people. Now, I fully intend to keep my promise. You know, we went from 2,000 donation to 4,000, and this year, by the end of the year, we'll probably keep our promise and double that again to 8,000. The question is between now and then, is the, the first warming shelter that we donated to was your property, Mr. Mayor, at the south end of Taft, and then last year, it was up north. Now, I don't know where exactly the money goes, but I do know that it gets a big bang for the buck. And so I'm here to, to support the warming shelter. The one caveat is that the, the barrier of 35 degrees and below, as you know, if you look at the history of Lincoln City, it's kind of rare that the temperature gets down that low. It does get there, but not enough to really help a lot of people. For us to donate, you know, 2 and 4, and now this year, 8,000, I really hope that you would listen to Richard Music, or Patrick Alexander, or who, you know, Chief Killian, who is the other person that consulted before we made our secondary donation. If you can raise that, instead of 35 and below, to 40 or 45 degrees, I think you can help a lot more people.
Okay. I can just interrupt for a second.
Sure.
That's not a city function. The city had nothing to do with it, and neither did I.
Right.
I just, I just gave my building free.
Right.
Whoever the shelter organization was that you donated to, they set those rules.
Okay.
The city had nothing to do with it.
Okay. Well...
But don't let that stop you from giving them money.
No. Well, we're gonna donate. The question is, if we know that we need to donate more, in other words, right now it's 35 degrees, if we know that the, that the barrier, whether it's up north, you know, at the, at the church behind IGA, I forget the name of it.
On the G-16.
Yeah. They do a great job. If we know that there needs to be a, a further donation to help, we're considering that. Because, because we want to make a difference, and we know that even the first donation, which was only $2,000, we know it made a huge bang for the buck. So we just want to make a difference. And if, and if it's, and I know this is probably for them or for others like me that want to donate, if we raise that to 40 or 45 degrees, I think we can help a lot more people and do more. And what they do at, at both charities for the homeless is so helpful. And what they do at Bosch Bosch to help people do laundry for free, if we have one place in this city, whether it's north, mid, or south, where homeless people can take a shower, that's something that we would consider. I don't know what the solution is to that, but if there's a place that we can figure, whether it's a public-private partnership, or whether it's something that Richard or Patrick figure out, we would consider donating more to that. Because, you know, helping people get a free meal, helping them have a place to sleep when it's rainy and cold is one thing, but helping people get, well, what's the best way to phrase this? You know, lift them up by their bootstraps? If they have a place to shower and shave and have some clothing, and there's a lot of people in this city that donate clothing, help them design a resume and help them get a job. That's, that's a huge thing. So, anyway.
Yeah. Everyone you need to talk to is right out there in the audience tonight, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Have at it.
Will do.
Thank you. Anyone else who did not sign up who'd like to speak? Last chance. All right. Thank you very much. We're moving on. We are going to bring forward now, and Ron, help me, who's, who's presenting what?
I'm gonna ask our Scott Humbert if he'll come forward and introduce everybody. This is for the Tour to Die For, which the...
Travel Oregon Award.
...we received the Travel Oregon Award. So Scott will come up and introduce everybody.
Oh, there you are. I am having a hard time seeing that back row.
Good evening. I'm Scott Humbert, marketing manager with the VCB. Just wanted to kind of present an award that the VCB and its partners were awarded at the 2017 Travel Oregon Governor's Conference on Tourism, for an event we put out called the Tour to Die For, which was the cemetery tours that we did October. We did this in partnership with Theater West, with Pioneer Cemetery Association, the North Lincoln County Historical Museum, Chinook Winds Casino, and a little help from the Cultural Center, too. So it was, this is the second award that it received for heritage tourism, one from the Oregon Festival and Events Association, the other with Travel Oregon. So it's nice that we've been recognized, one as a, kind of a partnership, as we talked about incubation in the VCB as a form of event promotion versus operation and logistics, and how this has really been an example of, of how that can pay off, but also as a way to use heritage as a way to promote tourism in, in Oregon.
Just make sure you introduce yourself, please.
My name is Louis Smith. I'm on the board of Theater West. And, yeah, we just wanted to, this particular event, we were really impressed, given that it was a collaboration, a first time, between the partners that he mentioned, the Theater West, the museum, and the Taft Pioneer Cemetery. There was also two other organizations involved, the Chinook Winds, which donated buses, drivers, and people to tell stories on the bus, as well as the Cultural Center, which is where we were based. They provided cookies, hot cocoa, and, and stuff. Just given that it was, and I don't know how many of you actually attended this event or not, but I'll give you a real quick Cook's Tour of what it entailed. People would show up at the Cultural Center, get onto a bus, take the bus up to the cemetery. They'd do a little tour around West Devils Lake Road, where they were told the stories of the local legends. Get up to the cemetery. There were six of us up there. I was one of the dead people.
You were great, by the way.
And, I appreciate that. It's the skin lotion. It's, no. And where each of us portrayed somebody that is buried in the cemetery. And it was not like a Halloween-type thing. It was historical. It was like when Ben Franklin came to your school as a kid or something and talked, and the President Abraham Lincoln at Disney, but without the animatronics. And it was, it was, given all the different agencies involved and all the different parts that everybody played, there was really no snafus. It was, it was truly amazing. It, it really worked like clockwork. And, and as a performer, I think, we were kind of amazed, because it was kind of the first time. We thought, okay, you know, there, you know, we'll cut our teeth on this, and the next year we'll learn. And then there's always something to learn, but it just was really a fantastic event. And it was a lot of fun. And, you know, we're looking forward to doing it again this coming year in, in October. We've expanded to, I think we added one more night, didn't we, of tours? So there's four tours a night, and we use the museum as a backup if the weather is inclement. And, again, just a great exercise in cooperation between, you know, the different agencies. And I do want to throw, I have to say that the VCB was fantastic, and I have to commend Ed Drystat, who couldn't be here today for his, he was kind of the glue that held this whole thing together. He was there every night. He came up to check on us. It was kind of cold up there some nights, up in the cemetery, and he brought us stuff to drink. He made sure that the drivers were there, if somebody couldn't make it. He was there every night. So I have to say, the VCB really, you know, was, held it all together, and, you know, we're just personally grateful for everything they did in that project. And that's all I got. I'm looking forward to doing it another year, a different character, so if you get a chance, come check it out. We handed out free nickels at the end of the last one. You never know.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone feel free, if you have something to say. Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Good evening. I'm Cheryl Smith at the Taft Cemetery Association. I'm the president, going on 24 years. When Ed came to us to present this Tour to Die For, we all looked at each other like, hmm, what's interesting in our cemetery? So more he talked about it, and more we said, okay, we'll do it. We set the stage, took out the actors. Ann Hall at the museum presided on information of the deceased pioneers, which is quite interesting. I was one of the volunteers of tour guide, and it went like clockwork. We had a little mishaps of the bus, and some other people didn't know which one they're gonna do, but we ironed that all out. And Ed, it was very nice that he provided chocolate, hot chocolate for us. He also said a little bit of nip or something in there, but we never did get it. But, oops. But, hell, we had fun. I hope you guys will come this year to, to the Tour to Die For. We got new, different characters up there now, and different locations of the cemetery. And keep in note, next year, they're gonna do my dad. So I hope to see you.
And Scott, if you could give mention to the gentleman who took the, those wonderful photos.
Oh, yes, Cody Chau. And we worked with him on a number of projects, but he did a really great job with this. This one, just considering time of day, nighttime shooting's really tough, and he shot it. We had a great sky that night that had some great cloud coverage, and he got some excellent photos, which I think helped sell the award to Travel Oregon. When you can see the visuals that go along with it, it just really brought it to life. And he did an awesome, just pro bono promotional shot for it, too, that was able to go out with the press releases. And just having that partnership with him, and that flexibility with him being local to come in and help the project out was immensely helpful.
Well done to you. Well done to Ed, and the cemetery, the actors, all. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It was proud.
We hope that this is a, you know, another way for the VCB to really use that partnership with other organizations, to let them shine, and to let them bring their capabilities to these events. And really, we want to be that glue that can help promote and hold these things together, but let the partners really be the ones to shine.
Absolutely. Great philosophy.
And we've got a, a short video of the awards presentation, where it was kind of the unique thing, where we actually had two of the performers come to us, to Salem, and do an abbreviated version of their performances onstage. So I've edited that down to the short version, so I've got just a couple of minutes here to show you real quick.
The first award for this evening is the Oregon Heritage Tourism Award. It recognizes outstanding incorporation of Oregon's authentic cultural or natural history as a device to draw visitors to the state, and it better to give us a glimpse into the heritage event that brings the past to life once a year for visitors to the Oregon coast than the permanent residents themselves.
Arv Leonard, wake up! We have company! Oh, wait. This isn't Pioneer Cemetery. Who are you? Where's my family? Oh, well, it's company. Ah, it's Mamie Arlinger. I was born in 1859, and I died in 1940. I'd be 159 years old today. And you know what they say? I'm Lincoln City's deadliest catch. Ah, I have a beautiful home on the Slits Bay, two-story finished home, beautiful looking, and they saw me every day out there on my rocking chair. If I wasn't there, they knew where I was. I was out there on that beautiful Slits Bay, in my boat called the Acme. I loved that boat just as much as you love Tom and Jerry today. Oh, boy, the stories I could tell you about that boat. But in the meantime, I'm sitting up in the top of the hill at Pioneer Cemetery amongst my friends and family, looking out amongst the sea, and a view to die for with my family. It's so nice to have visitors. You need to come visit us. Look at that view. There's nothing like it. And I'd love to tell you another story or two. Come see me soon. You hear?
I come from Finland, and I came here in, around 1905, in my mid-20s. Now, lots of people came from Finland here to homestead, for the free land, and the rivers and the streams and the fishing, and of course, the Finns, dolphin and shark fins. Man, you should have slugged funnier back then. I didn't really have a great deal of need for money, but I would grow my own flowers, and then I would put it in my wheelbarrow and walk through town, and I would holler out, roses, 10 cents, roses. Of course, I didn't always have roses. Sometimes I had lilies, but I still yelled, roses just the same, and they still bought them just the same, so it worked out for everybody. Now, I will say, the, the little children liked to follow me up the road, and, again, not needing much money, I would always kind of throw them a nickel or something, and they loved that. They would laugh and, and follow me. And I, after a while, I started realizing it was kind of like a protection payments, because it kept them nice, and because they liked to play tricks. For example, when I left here, I was full of freshly cut, fresh flowers, but somehow they replaced them with these oddly synthetic polymers. And I, I, I don't know what that is. I don't even know what that means, but that's not why I left the house. I do have some nickels here. If anybody needs a nickel, I guess it doesn't quite get you a phone call, sir. You, you look like you could use a nickel. There you go, sir. Have two! Thank you. Thank you.
To honor the efforts and the impact that this group has had on Lincoln City, I am pleased to announce that the Oregon Heritage Tourism Award goes to several organizations that together have successfully produced a Tour to Die For. Accepting the award on behalf of the event are, hold your applause, please, Ed Drystat and Scott Humbert from the Lincoln City Visitor and Convention Bureau, Cheryl Smith from the Taft Pioneer Cemetery Association, Louis Smith, Terry King, and Patty Seibers from Theater West, Ann Hall from the North Lincoln County Historical Museum, and Bill John from Chinook Winds Casino Resort. Please join me in congratulating them on receiving the Oregon Heritage Tourism Award.
All right. Thank you again. Well done. Who gets the awards now? Where do they stay?
It's gonna be up in the VCB for a little while, but it will come down for sure. They need to just...
Yeah, yeah. Those are people, oh, absolutely, yeah.
They were nice enough to give every organization their own individual award, too, which was really nice of them.
Just want to be able to point people where to see it. Great. Thank you, Scott. Excellent job. Okay. So now we're jumping back up. I don't want to. Can we just stop on that? It's done. Be finished for the night. All right. The ordinance is none. Resolution, right? Am I gonna jump too far ahead? Nope. Okay. Resolutions. Resolution 2017-09, a resolution amending Resolution 2016-13, authorizing city staff to administer and accept grant funds from the Bureau of Land Management for trail restoration slash decommissioning in the area of the Knoll Open Space. Allison Roberts.
I can, I can address this. It's pretty much housekeeping. We're simply attempting to update the resolution to reflect that we, yes, are accepting a grant, but it will be administered through the city as opposed to through URA, and we've had some personnel changes, so that's the purpose of the resolution.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve Resolution 2017-09.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion? Hearing, none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Public hearing, public comment. Public hearing continued from May 22, 2017, and request to continue, to continue to June 26, 2017, to receive public comment regarding the formation of Northeast 36th Drive Sanitary... Good. Sanitary Sewer Local Improvement District.
Did we do the consent agenda?
Yes.
All of it?
Way back, Lynn.
Where was that?
I move to continue the public hearing.
Well, hang on one second. Do I need to run through the script real quick or no?
I, I think we've, I think it's a continued hearing, so if you, you can ask if there's anybody that has a conflict.
Yeah. Is there anyone who had a conflict on the board, or the council, rather, needs to declare? Okay. All right. Go ahead.
I move to continue the hearing on the Northeast 36th Drive Sanitary Sewer Local Improvement District to June 26, 2017, this location at 6:00 PM. Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
I have some.
Please.
I just have a few thoughts about, oh, there's Stephanie. A few thoughts about this particular LID, and it got me thinking of a bigger, broader picture, so I'm not sure if this is 100% appropriate, but here I go. City manager, you may stop me if you think this is appropriate somewhere else, and that's fine with me. I just want to say, first of all, how this particular sewer project may have provided us with a potential option in how to handle these projects in the future, and that I'm sorry for the length of time and the numerous attempts and methods to address it, so thank you to all of the 36th Street Drive residents for their patience, and I hope, understanding that we're trying to find the best way to address this for everybody. And I think I heard that we, the council, want eventually the entire city to be stewarded, that that would be a big, broad goal of the city. And, and the city was, all of these, the sewer parts and pieces that are in existence now were all put together under the LID system. And the LID is a way in which the neighbors can get a sewer on their street, and that they agree to pay for it over a 20-year period of time, rather than paying up to and around $20,000 all at once. And so that's the reason for the LID, the city... $20,000 all at once. And so that's the reason for the LID. The city puts the system in and the residents or businesses pay for that system over time, pay the city back. It's a loan-type program. And the sewer system provides value to the property owner, maybe not initially, but when they sell their property, it'll be a benefit to them as well. And I would just like to ask the question, can we, we, the city and residents alike, consider LIDs to be a system whereby the entire length and all the hookups are one system rather than individual hookups? And this was kind of an idea that came up during this particular LID request because they're, first to start out with a small group of people and then it grew and it grew. And so I just want to say if we could look at these in the future as a full system rather than individual hookups, I think it'll prove beneficial to the city as well as to the folks that want to hook up. Maybe they hadn't thought about it yet, but so, um, what I'm suggesting, I guess, is, oh, and there's one more piece to this too, is that I found online, just doing simple, looking up a portable holding tank. And so the idea is if the city purchased one of these tanks and had it available so that whenever like the, um, the one family who, whose septic system failed this time, if we had this available, then we could hook them up to something right now so they don't have to go to friends' houses to shower and wash their dishes and wash their clothes. And it's difficult to live without being able to flush your toilet. And, um, but if we had something like that, that the city owned and that's portable, that could be moved, that maybe when the next, the next situation we find ourselves in, we would have a quick remedy so it wouldn't have to necessarily be such an emergency or a rush for the city to look at what area we're looking at and also for the individuals who are really suffering because they are waiting for a process to come forward. And I don't know how much these things cost. I'm not an engineer. Stephanie is. She can help with that. But so I'm just suggesting that we do that and that we look, we have staff to look broadly in all the areas where we aren't seored and actually put a plan together and start talking with people that are on unsued areas and start developing an overall plan for the city and then have one of these on hand for those exceptions that don't roll out over time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I do. Also with the LIDs in the past. Also, in the past, is there a way to get the LID per owner or per property owner, a cost associated with the initial LID once it's activated to compare with what's being proposed? So as we have a comparison to see if this is within the range of previous LIDs and I don't know the length of time, but five years or so, I guess.
Anyone else? Okay. Um, all in favor, I guess. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none. Motion carries. Let's see, on the 26th. Public hearing, public comment. An opportunity for public comment on proposed water sewer rate increases proposed under Resolution 2017-07. Ma'am, I'm just gonna do, we've talked about this, I'm sorry, but we don't have the script. So we're gonna open a public hearing.
Just would open a public hearing.
Okay, so it's 6:35. We're gonna open the public hearing for proposed water sewer rate increases. Anyone have a conflict of interest on the council? No. Any member of the audience wish to challenge the qualifications of a council to participate in this matter? Seeing none. After the staff presentation, any person may speak up to three minutes. If we have questions, your time responding will not be counted against your time limit. If you wish to speak, write your name down. Well, I already got the sheet, so I'll just call you up here. And then I guess staff report.
What do you mean?
And we do have your tag there somewhere.
She'll be up several times, so. Um, in the, in the proposed budget that the Budget Committee approved, we have a water and sewer rate increase in the proposed budget. The water increase is 4% and the sewer is 6%. Uh, this is to provide funding, not only for the operations of the water and the sewer facilities, but also to continue investment in the capital maintenance and improvement of those systems. So we're required...
Hold that mic up a little bit. I'm sorry.
We provide an opportunity for comment on, on rate changes.
That's it? Okay, all right. Well, I, let's see, I think all, the only person that signed up was Jerry.
Again, my name is Jerry Warner. I live at 1233 Lakewood. Mr. Mayor and Council, I have a few comments I'd like to make in regards to the water rate increase. I've been keeping records on the water and sewer rates since 2006-7. And at that time, based on 700 cubic fit, excuse me, cubic feet, which is kind of a good average, the 2006-7 sewer and water rates would have cost you $518.64 annually. With the new proposed rates with 700 cubic feet, will cost you $1,286.88 annually. I was able to get a copy of the new proposed rates at City Hall today. Since 2006-7, rates have increased by 148%. Again, 148% since 2006. The difference between the current rate and the proposed rate, the one that's in effect now and the new one that's coming out will cost somebody using 700 cubic feet, $62.13 more. I'm sure you council members would look at it as a very small increase, but there's plenty of people in this community that it's a lot of money. I have watched the council over the years ask little or no questions regarding rate increases for water and sewer. In other words, they've been going through automatically with very little interest. For the benefit of the citizens of this community, the council needs to contract with a sewer and water rate analyst to come in and review these rate increases without any input from the city administration. That's the only way we're gonna know whether we're totally on track or not because you people aren't rate analysts, so you can only vote on what you're told. But if you hire somebody to come in and do it, you'll learn a whole lot more about what really is going on within the city. The revenue for sewer and water, budgeted for next year, is almost three-quarters of a million dollars. In other words, a $745,575 increase coming into the city and increased water rates based on this new rate schedule, which is a sizable increase. There has been a rate increase every year since 2006. I'm sure that these large numbers of property owners that will, won't agree with me, but there's many that will, that this city needs to either reduce or stop these, these increases. I can only imagine the impact for many seniors trying to live on social security. Thank you.
Jerry, appreciate it. Anyone who did not sign up who wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none. Thank you. Okay, motion to continue. Well, that's the last one. Motion to close the hearing, close the record.
Move to close the hearing and close the record.
Second.
Motion to second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Okay. What say you?
I believe you have a resolution right now.
Election for the state's administration.
I'd make the motion, Mr. Mayor, to approve Resolution 2017-07, a resolution setting forth water and sewer rates.
Second.
Motion to second. Discussion. I do. And I'm sorry, I've just been a little preoccupied this week. Ron, perhaps you can answer for me, how did we arrive at the four and the six?
It's a combination of a couple of things. The first is looking at our expenses for this fiscal year, but also projecting out from our, over the next five or six or seven plus years and looking at the, both the revenue and the expense projections that we have. One of the things that we showed the Budget Committee was that indeed our expenditures right now and the track that we're going are projected to increase faster than what our historical or even projected inflation rate is going to be.
And what's driving that?
Devin, you want to help answer that? I can answer that for a couple of budgets, but I'm not sure I can answer it for more than that.
I would say it's a combination of increasing personnel costs, some which we have, and capital demands, infrastructure, need to maintain the capital.
As we are going forward, one of the things that, again, I discussed with the Budget Committee, which will become really kind of our top priority as we go into next year, is that the staff is going to have to begin from the point of that any proposed expense increase overall would have to be equal to or less than what the, than what the forecasted inflation rate is going to be. So that's part of what we're doing. Now, the other part is, as it pertains to the sewer rates, the projections that we showed the Budget Committee will be drastically affected by the future proposals that will be coming to you about the upgrades to our sewer system. And depending on how those are financed and how those work, the budget increase from the sewer could be a little bit higher in the first years and then drop off, much less later on, or vice versa. Those, that projection will fluctuate depending upon how we finance the, the different projects that we'll have over the next dozen-plus years.
And will, if I get this right, the, the new device we're buying, the centrifuge, will that help lower our costs?
It will keep it about the same, except in the first year. We have two sewer lagoons that are full. Those have to be emptied. And so we, and they can only be emptied in the application of them to, to open land. Then you also will have the cost of the new drying equipment that we purchased. So those two in the first year will be added together because we, as you know, we've, have not been able to empty those out on, on a consistent basis over the last couple of years. So this upcoming year, the budget reflects both the emptying of the pond and then the new processing for drying the sludge. After this year, then we'll go back to just the drying of the sludge and the cost is supposed to be roughly the same as it is for the application on the farms.
I might add on to that. One of, one of the issues with the costs in our wastewater system is the number of pump stations that we have to have here in the city. And those pump stations have to be periodically replaced. And so trying to get a capital plan where we can maintain and replace those pump stations is part of the issue of the need for funding in the sewer. The, the rates that are proposed in the budget, the 4% water, will cover the capital maintenance needed in the water systems in the foreseeable future or in the, in the few years ahead of time that we have projected. The 6% rate in sewer does not cover the capital needs.
What do we do then?
That's the proposal that we have discussed with you in some of our work meetings and we'll discuss much more, is that we have about $25 million worth of projects. And we've looked out over the next dozen-plus years on how to space those out and how to finance it. Now, there's a couple of options that are available to you. As we've discussed, you can finance those through rates and, and with the information we showed you that a 6% increase will be insufficient to be able to cover that kind of investment. The other option you have is through a property tax. That, of course, would have to be voted on by the residents. That, that enables you to hold your rates down, but it also would apply a property tax cost.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah. Isn't there also the way that we, we send our tax, our water rate bills out? That we have to have so much to hold on to because the bills are paid in such a slow process? Is there a way we can reduce the amount of time when those bills come due?
Can I address that?
There is a, there is a wait, wait time between when we actually provide the water and, and when we get paid for it. Because you use the water and then it gets read through the meter and then it gets billed and then there's a period of time until you have to pay for it. However, that's a fairly consistent need and that's not what is driving the, the increase in costs. Because that's, that's just an ongoing cash flow issue that we have all the time.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Contrary to the comments from the citizen that just came forward, I'd, I'd like to remind the public and certainly council that this was a heavy topic in the Budget Committee that met four times during the month of April and May. And, you know, certainly the entire, doing the five-year forecast out over time, we can tell you today what we anticipate the increases will be for the next, you know, four years. Because we're looking out at what our costs are projected to be. The other thing, Devin, could you share with us, I see this chart in front of us of the anticipated rate increases and city water for a single family, base rate 23.88. What's today's rate for the same?
I can look it up for you.
Well, I'm thinking this rate increase is 50 cents. You know, it's in, in that same range.
I got it in my book right over there.
Could you, I think it's, I love throwing around big numbers, but I'm a little more, you know, what's my monthly rate and 4% on the fall, small numbers. Not that it doesn't have impact, but I would like to be...
Ron, do you have those long-term plans in your, do you have your book? Mine doesn't have it.
So I've seen in the press lately, a lot of cities having to raise their water rates and I'm still amazed at how low ours are compared to other metropolitan areas and...
We do do periodic rate comparisons with other communities to try to, try to stay in line. And so far, we've compared well.
That's what I've seen.
Okay. I could run and get it. I just, you would think numbers would stick in my head, but they don't.
Well, and I don't want to belittle it, but I don't think it was, you know...
All total, if I recall, so these two figures together, let me just add these up. For the, um, for the five, five eight single family for the water and sewer, your base charge is $23.88 a month for the water and $26.66 for the sewer, which is $50. And while the two numbers, you know, one's four and one's 6%, they actually, when you look at the totals, are about a five... they actually, when you look at the totals, are about a 5% increase. And so you're, Debbie, help me if I'm right, it's under a dollar in the change.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, when you take the two of them combined, the amount is less than a dollar per month on the base rate.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I do. Is there a possibility of tiered increase depending on the line size? Is that something that happens?
I mean.
We actually, I'll go ahead and answer this one. We actually have a tier rate. If you look on Exhibit A, it goes from your 5.8 single-family up to a 6-inch line and you can see the differences. But the other area where you'll find is that we also have a consumption rate. The more that you consume, the rate per consumption also increases.
I understand that graph. I'm saying at, you charge more of a percentage based upon that meter size. So not every single one of those is a 4% increase. It would start at 4 and maybe go to 5, depending on the size.
4% straight across the board.
I understand.
It is, and I'm remembering. I'm remembering three, four years ago, we did look, when we put in the peak billing for the summer, we did hire an economic and fiscal analyst to take a look at our rate structure and analyze how we were doing it. So it's an option we could look into at some point if you'd like.
Well, I mean, just as a way to, you know.
Sure. Looking each other intently. Yeah, go ahead.
So, just real quick, back to the pumps. We have 30, how many pumps?
20, 32.
And what, they average a piece of a million bucks?
Yeah.
Okay, so somewhere we got to get that money to, as those pumps need to be replaced.
Yes.
What financing vehicle are we going to use to do that?
In the past, we've used property taxes and bonds. That's why we have bond payments that are funded by property taxes in our sewer bonds. What we do in the future, we could use rates or property taxes or a combination. That's kind of what we were thinking going into the proposed budget, was using a combination of those two. The budget only includes the 6% rate increase. It does not include anything in regards to property tax funding. That is an item we would need to address later.
And our rates are cost-driven. You have cost push.
Yes.
That determines not, even though you might try to keep them in line with other cities, the costs are going to be with their costs. You're not manipulating them.
No.
So.
Yeah, yeah.
We incur costs, you have to pass them along.
And unfortunately, some of our larger costs are, you know, like the electricity required to run the plants. How much control do you have of that?
Thank you.
Any else? Okay. Your call.
Ward.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Hoagland.
Yes.
Hinton.
Yes.
Casper.
Yes.
Walke.
Yes.
And Mayor Williams.
I'm going to abstain, just because I did not sit through the budget hearings and the discussions that went into coming to this decision, so I'll abstain.
Motion carries.
Let's be ready for office.
No. Just, no, thank you. Yeah, this is going to, this is going to, for you. Seven, public hearing, public comment, yes? Opportunity to receive public comment on Resolution 2017-08? Yes? You're still up here.
Yes, so, yeah, I have the next couple of items.
Resolution declaring the city's election to receive the state revenues, just a second. We're just going to run the same thing, 6:56 PM. Any counselor of a conflict of interest? No? Any personal bias? No. Any audience member wish to challenge the qualifications of a counselor? Go ahead.
So included in our approved budget is revenue line item in the general fund. It's called state shared revenues. It's a form of the liquor tax division that the state does. In order for us to receive these monies, we're required to hold a public hearing so that citizens can comment on if we should get these monies or if we don't want them.
Debbie, I'm having a hard time hearing you. Can you tilt that a little?
Okay. An opportunity for the public to comment if we should receive these monies or not and if there's a specific use that we should use them for. Currently, they're in our general fund. So it's just an opportunity to comment on that revenue line item. And it's just open the hearing, there's no formula specific required for this one.
Okay. Any member of the audience wish to comment on this? Seeing none, okay. Do you want us to continue or close the record?
Do we need to have a motion to open and close?
Did we open the? I think you did. Yeah, we did. Yeah, you announced the time and opened. It was real, we didn't have the script scripted, so we're just kind of winging it. I apologize.
I move to close the public hearing and the record.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Closed. Motion carries. Okay.
Motion to approve Resolution 2017-08. A resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion.
I do.
Please.
Is this based upon the two, or the two liquor stores? Or is it all the liquor stores divided upon how many liquors? Like, how does this figure come to us? Because it could be similar to the marijuana tax and if it's based upon locations or things like that. So I would assume our marijuana tax would be coming in similarly. So just as a way to gauge, you know, we have now a dispensaries, we have two liquor places. So, you know, how is that number accumulated?
So there's two ways the liquor tax is allocated. We actually have an actual line item that's liquor tax that we receive. We don't have to do anything special for that. And then there's a second way, which is called the state revenue sharing, which is this $142,000. I believe they have different formulas for how they allocate. It does involve population. I don't think it's directly tied to how many stores we have or directly tied to the sales that are within the city. I believe it's primarily population.
And that, sorry, but that covers all alcohol sales. It's not just the two outlets, correct?
Correct. It's any liquor tax.
Marijuana and hard spirits.
Yes. If I had to guess on a marijuana tax, I would probably use the liquor tax as a starting point and say, well, you know, what's the, how does the tax rates compare? And how does consumption compare, you know?
Right, we'll find out.
We'll find out, yeah.
Then I have a question before I vote on this. We have a chance to discuss how it's disbursed at a later date or do we have to decide that now?
Currently, it's in the general fund and it's used to support general fund activities as well as transfers that are going out.
Right, but you said we could decide.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, point of clarification. Are you talking about the marijuana tax or the liquor tax?
What we're discussing tonight.
Okay, the liquor tax.
You had said we decide, we can decide where it goes. And I just want to, if we say yes tonight, is it done? And that we don't get to say where it goes?
The, we have to allow a public hearing so that the public can comment on what they think we should use the money for? That's.
And that's tonight.
And that's tonight.
Yes, but the use of it is actually part of the proposed budget. So if you want to use it differently based upon the comments that you'll hear, then when we get to the next resolution, you would change the budget from what the Budget Committee approved.
Correct.
Okay, I just, yeah, I hadn't paid attention to that. It just seems to me that if we wanted to discuss treatment options for people and funding those things and that would be the time? Or I suppose we could bring it up later date and, okay. I'll just leave that one live then. Okay, anyone else? No?
Anderson.
Yes.
Hoagland.
Yes.
Hinton.
Yes.
Casper.
Yes.
Walke.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
And Mayor Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right. Public hearing, public comment. Opportunity to receive public comment on proposed Resolution 2017-10, adopting the budget 2017-2018 budget.
Your Honor. Yeah, I think I need to do that before you open the public hearing. I need to state that I met with a statutory conflict of interest. I must declare a potential conflict, excuse me, conflict of interest because decisions could affect the funding of a grant that pays my salary. That grant is part of the Urban Renewal Economic Development Toolbox, which includes funding for many things in the urban renewal district. The urban renewal budget has already been considered and was adopted earlier this evening. The reason I'm making this disclosure is that the proposed city budget on line item 6270150, entitled Economic Development Program, includes an allocation from the general fund to the Urban Renewal Economic Development Toolbox. The Economic Development Toolbox includes many tools for assisting businesses in the urban renewal district. One of the tools is a grant to the Bay Area Merchants Association for their downtown manager, which was awarded in 2014, prior to my election to the city council. However, six months ago, I was hired as the downtown manager. Funds from the city general fund could be added to the urban renewal budget to assist businesses in the urban renewal district. Those funds could be used to pay my salary.
Thank you. And just an FYI, we would have done that after I opened the hearing.
Oh.
It's okay, we're kind of winging it tonight. So at 7:02 PM, the hearing on the adoption of the proposed 2017-2018 budget was open. Any conflict of interest? We've heard from Counsel Walke, okay. Personal bias? Does any member of the audience wish to challenge qualifications of a counselor to participate in this matter? After the staff presentation, any person may speak up for three minutes. If we have questions or time responding, will not be counted at that time. And then staff presents report. And I'll just state now, I'm going to have to abstain from voting on this one again, but please.
So in the council packet, I had a staff memo related to the 2017-18 budget. There were actually quite a few changes that were made by the Budget Committee. I have those detailed out in the staff memo. We have made those changes. That is, those are reflected in the resolution. Rather than going through them in the interest of time, I'll ask if there's any questions. I feel like I'm eating the thing.
No, you keep drifting.
I'm sorry.
Stay right on top of it.
Okay.
Or speak up. Anyone?
I appreciated the detail on the memo that we received.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, not necessarily to Debbie, I just have, I have a.
Okay.
I have something, so do I wait for the next?
So then, okay, thank you. Any member of the audience wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none. Motion to close the hearing, close the record.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion?
I'm not sure if it belongs here, if it belongs under the 8.8 item. But I have but I have a request for the budget item. So do I do that now or during the resolution? Okay. This is in support to fund a Parks and Recreation Director position. And I would like to make a motion, which I would say, I move to increase personal services in the Recreation Department of the general fund by $54,000 and increase $9,000 from the capital outlay of the outlay of the Recreation Department and decrease the contingency fund of the general fund by $63,000 or the total sum of those amounts. Furthermore, I move to increase personal services and park maintenance fund by $54,000 and increase capital outlay of parks maintenance fund by $9,000 and decrease the contingency fund of park maintenance fund by $63,000 or total sum of those amounts. The second.
I have a motion to second, discussion. Hearing none.
I'm wondering if this is within the financial parameters that.
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think it's important to at least appropriate funding for a potential position, knowing fully well it's up to the city manager. But the things that the people of the city use, it's the library, the community center and the parks. The participation for the parks from the community at large was tremendous. And it's one of the things that they truly use. Those people who live here every day, every year, and they've requested parks. Since we had a director before, I think it's only logical to try to pursue the continuation and direction that we need to go for the parks in our area. So I encourage this.
Else?
Mayor, I disagree. It's the other side of it. It means adding another high-level public employee to the city budget. Hard to, we've heard this proposal before, we being the Budget Committee and, you know, it didn't make it through Budget Committee at that time. So this is kind of an end run. No disagreement with parks are important. I think there's plenty of time for that. It's being served now. We had talked during the Budget Committee of working it into, you know, the coming year budget. And we just finished the master plan, so it would be a good time. So I'd still oppose.
Please. I mean, I'm in favor. I mean, it's, the last five years have shown that outdoor activities have steadily increased, 5% over the last five years. And yearly, $646 billion are spent on recreation. It's one of the last, you know, the only things that have really, over the last five years, continued to grow as an outdoor activity. And I think it will only benefit us financially as well as the community. The, it's third only to outpatient health care and financial services and insurance as far as annual consumer spending, outdoor activities. And it's really, it's a huge market. And I think that if we don't, if we don't prepare ourselves for that, I think we're really going to shoot ourselves in the foot by not having someone to oversee and really make it, our outdoor activities really be a big part of our city. You know, 140 million Americans go outside and enjoy the outdoors. And so I think that to not have somebody oversee that would be a big mistake.
I have more comments, if I may. What's happening now, with the exception of the last couple of months, is that it's, is that Parks and Recreation has been, outdoor recreation, that is, has been managed by a few people. Public Works Director and the Senior Planner, and I'm sure there are others who have participated in the management over the last five years since we did have a Parks Director. And we need somebody overseeing parks that is looking at the budget, helping to direct that budget, looking forward to overall strategies for how to apply grants and how to get the work done that needs to be done, how to plan for the future, who, somebody specifically who understands that outdoor recreation, which is something that seemed, from the Parks Plan, that seems to be wanting to grow. And we don't have that right now. And also, I wanted to say that although I really appreciate the city manager stepping into the role of the Parks Director, I don't think that's why we hired him. I mean, he's great and he can oversee all of that, but he really has a lot of work on his plate. And so he stepped into that role seeing and actually appreciating all the work that goes on for the parks. And I appreciate that work. City manager, I, that's a big, that's a big foot to step into, plus what you're already doing. And we have a number of volunteers that have been working with the Parks Board over the years. They're very dedicated. They like the idea of going and tromping around and seeing what what trails need to be maintained and what, you know. So they're very, very helpful, but they are not staff. And so we also need someone who has that coordinated outreach that can, you know, bring meetings together with the neighbors and work with the board and. bring meetings together with the neighbors and work with the board and coordinate the overall health of the parks and provide new opportunities such as these outdoor recreation opportunities that we don't have now that, that are identified in the plan. We need to give City Manager a break here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Again, what we're proposing is a, not a one-time capital improvement, but we're talking an ongoing expense. And I appreciate all the points made. It's easy to fund it once when you have some loose change in your pocket and can move money around. What I've not heard is where will the revenue come from in the future? There are two departments in the city that are way under, or don't have a revenue stream meeting its expenses, and that's parks and that's streets. We've struggled just having funds available to maintain our parks. And now you want to dip into it and hire another expensive body. Thus, my suggestion of, now that you have the master plan in place, that you take the next year to figure out where your revenue for the future to pay for this position will come from. And I, I'm sure you're going to tell me the person can write for grants, and that's a favorite. I don't buy it.
I mean, if I may. Half of that position is funded by the TRT. So I mean, that's directly coming from, coming from transit room taxes.
Half the funds for parks goes TRT?
Half of this position is proposed to be paid for by the Parks Maintenance Fund, which is funded by the TRT tax.
So what you've just done is taken it from maintenance of parks?
It's going to be, well, yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
There's my point.
I mean, it's going to be overseen. I mean, and just because you can't quantify the joy and the appeal to families that don't, that spending money at a park, doesn't give it value to the city, and not everything is valued by dollars.
Okay. Are you ready for the question? Are you ready? I'm going to cut off this debate. Anyone new? Wanted to add something? No? And I'm, Mr. Appicello. This is a new motion. Now, I'm going to not participate in the vote on the budget, but I think I'm voting on this. What are your thoughts?
Typically, you recuse yourself if you haven't had an opportunity to review the tapes. And that's why you're recusing yourself from the vote on the budget. This is a, I suppose this was discussed to some extent during the budget hearing, so...
I'm comfortable with the numbers presented, though, so I think I'm okay. If someone says different, I'll, but I'm going to participate in this one.
I would like to challenge that.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So noted. And if the full council disagrees with the mayor's participation, the full council can vote on that. The mayor's indicated that he doesn't believe he has any actual conflict of interest. It's just whether or not he's reviewed the tapes sufficiently for purposes of this motion. He says he feels comfortable with what the new item that's been presented with voting on it. As regards the entire budget, though, he's indicated that he has not reviewed the entire hearing, so he's not going to vote.
So how do you make a motion to disallow him to vote?
You would, you would make that motion and the full council would decide?
Before the vote for that, for what, Deanna's, that's on the table?
If that's what you're wanting to do, I think you would need to do that.
So I would like, I'd make a motion to disallow Mr. Williams to vote on this.
The problem we run into with these things is, let's say like when we talk about a bias, is there have to be facts attached to it that say, here's why. And I don't know that there's any facts that haven't been mentioned already. You know, I've heard the presentation of the numbers here, and we're speaking about something completely separate and isolated from the budget. And so again, I feel comfortable having heard the discussions and voting on this.
He's present here for this discussion.
Yeah. So I don't know that that, I mean, you can vote all day. I just don't think it's going to hold up, so...
I still make my motion.
I second it.
Okay. Now, see, now I'm in a quandary, because we have a motion and a second on something that I don't believe can be voted on. And this is where I run into an issue as the parliamentarian, is we have something that, I, I'm a little lost. Because I believe I have a right to vote. And then what happens if we then find out, yeah, I do have a right to vote? Do we come back and visit it again?
Well, an individual councillor can make the decision to recuse themselves for, like you said, not having reviewed the entire tape. If the full council disagrees with that decision, the full council can override the individual councillor.
Then I guess, going back to your motion, Councillor Hoagland, is what do you think I don't, I haven't heard, what am I missing that would exclude me from voting on this?
I don't believe I have to define my motion.
We kind of have to give a reason for excluding me from voting. You can't just go, I don't want any voting today.
You have stated on the previous things that you didn't participate. You weren't at those meetings. You did leave early. And you've stated that you didn't watch the tapes. So that's the basis of my motion.
Right. But we're talking about this motion.
That...
You're asking me to vote on this motion, not the adoption of the budget. You follow?
Yeah.
Okay. So it still gets back to my question, because I guess I'll look into it. Should we, if this passes and then I'm excluded from the vote, yet we find out that I should not have been excluded from the vote, do we revisit this? Have I lost a right to vote?
I believe that if you decide on your own that you're not going to participate, you've decided that, I believe the full council can override you.
Based on facts, again, because you've brought that to our attention before, if there's a question of bias, you have to present facts with that.
Yes.
Here's why you can't. Not just, I just don't want you voting.
Yeah. I believe you stated that for purposes of this motion, that you're here, you heard the presentation, you have the facts that everybody else has.
Could we call for the vote and see what happens?
Could I just mention something, please? First of all, the only difference between the request that I made today and the one that was made in the budget hearing process, or Budget Committee process, was that the line items were not identified. It was an idea, I mean, it was a discussion that happened during the Budget Committee. I have brought today the line items where the budget would be increased and decreased, and it adds up to exactly the same amount of money. We aren't losing anything. It's coming, so I'm just saying, that's the difference.
Okay, but we're not debating that motion.
I know, I'm trying to get it here.
I know, I know. I didn't mean to catch up. Anyway, let's just go ahead. So any more discussion? I'm going to do a...
Do we have a repeat of the motion?
The motion is to exclude the mayor from voting on this amendment.
To exclude you from voting?
Voting.
That's the motion?
On Councillor Hinton's motion. Right. So I'm going to do just a roll call, just so for clarity's sake.
Correct.
Roll call. Casper?
Yes.
Walker?
No.
Ward?
Um, no.
Anderson?
No.
Oakland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Can't decide, so I'm going to abstain.
And Williams?
No.
Motion fails.
So we were still, we were at the roll call portion of the previous motion. So, please.
Okay.
Okay. It was so close.
Yeah, I know, but I really need the motion repeated again.
Okay. The motion was to adopt...
I'm going to, I think, Deanna, you have it all written down. I'm going to need to get that in writing. You can read it again.
I need to know where this is coming from again.
Oh, you want to know where the budget items are? Okay.
Is that the motion?
Yeah. Okay. My motion was to increase personal services in the Recreation Department of the General Fund by $54,000 and increase $9,000 from the capital outlay of the Recreation Department and decrease the contingency fund of the General Fund by $63,000 or total sum of those amounts. Furthermore, I moved to increase personal service and Park Maintenance Fund by $54,000 and increase capital outlay of Parks Maintenance Fund by $9,000 and decrease the contingency fund of Park Maintenance Fund by $63,000 or total sum of those amounts.
You're welcome.
Roll call.
Absolutely yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Anderson?
No.
Oakland?
Yes.
And Mayor Williams?
No.
Motion carries?
All right. All right. No, it was fine. It was absolutely fine. One thing, this brought up an interesting little discussion. I went back to Robert's Rules, and it's something we can talk about a little later in the debate portion. Normally, traditionally, you're limited to two discussions per motion. So, just so we don't get into these continuing, so make your points crystal clear unless council wants to change that at some point, but it's two motions, okay? Okay. I didn't settle that. Excuse me while I reorient my screen here.
So, Mayor, I'd make the motion to approve Resolution 2017-10 as amended by that last motion.
Second.
Motion on second. Discussion? Again, I'll be abstaining from this. Okay?
All right. Walker?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Oakland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
And there's abstaining. Motion carries.
Did that cover A2, adopting the budget? Or we need a separate one to adopt the budget?
Yep.
That was it? Okay. That was, okay, public comment.
We've got a third page of agenda.
Okay. So it's for Lord of Business, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Request from St. James Santiago Episcopal Church. Mr....
Give me a break. I've got to go over to this. There's three pages of agenda.
Oh, it's the one we had.
Okay. Counselors, it's, and Mr. Mayor, it's a pleasure to discuss this. You have in your packet a letter from the St. James Santiago Episcopal Church, or the parish of the Episcopal, I've got that right, my apologies. Anyways, they have made a request that has three parts to it. And I wanted to give you just a little bit of background and then a little bit more explanation as to where you're going forward. Over the last about year and a half, the city has been working with the church regarding the disposition of the property that you'll see up here in yellow, which is known as 25th Street, and Northeast 25th Street. And in December of last year, we had reached a point where we had discussed the city would exchange the property that we own in yellow for two easements, this rectangle here, a triangle, and then the red piece of property, which we would gain title to. At, on the meeting of the 19th of December, an additional proposal had come in, and at that point in time, the City Council decided that to decline the request of the, of the church. And it stood that way for about three months until I was approached again by the church. The request that you have in the letter before you is really threefold. The first is that they are requesting that you initiate the process of the property transfer, okay? And Mr. Appicello explained the difference between you initiating it versus the church initiating the process. That is really the question that's before you tonight. You're not here to consider what the proper deal, the proper exchange is. It has to go through that public process. So really, what you're being asked is, will you initiate the process? If you choose not to do that, the church can then initiate it themselves. And as Mr. Appicello explained two weeks ago, there's different routes and different requirements based upon whether you initiate it and the church initiates it. So the rest of this discussion really is just to give you information as you go forward. The church is proposing at this time that the city exchange Northeast 25th Street for the easement of this rectangle piece and the triangle piece, but not in giving title to the corner piece of this property, which is 5,000 square feet. Okay? And then the difference would be made up with, in the value, would be made up with the cash payment. As you consider this going forward, again, this is not something you're deciding this evening, there's two criteria that you have to meet. One is it has to be of, the exchange has to be of equal or greater value to the city, and it also has to be in the public interest. And you get to determine what the public interest is. The equal or greater value is easy. Public interest is your determination. Couple of points that you should note on this is that the city, I'll start here on this parcel here, that I'm, I can't see it very well. It's right just to the north of the Northeast 25th Street. We have a 20-foot access easement that follows the property boundary. So this is the, this is Northeast 25th Street. This is the property to the north, and we have that 20-foot access, access easement. That, of course, then connects us in, that 20-foot easement connects us to the Lincoln City property that we own, this parcel. We currently do not have the access, we do not have an easement of this parcel. It's 3,750 square feet. Now, the final thing that you should note is that under our systems transportation plan, which we recently adopted, there are requirements for how wide your street has to be when you're building a new street. This would, when I talked with our planning department, to determine that when this property develops, our property, what would this street become? How would it be classified? Arterial, collector, whatever it may be. And as near as we can guess, it would be a medium-use local, local street, which means that the... that the right-of-way width would have to be somewhere between forty-one to fifty-five feet, okay? So, as you consider this going forward, that is one of the things that you should consider is the access to your property and how you obtain that access and the value of that access, as well as the value of the property, of the street that we own, the value of the easement, and the value of that corner piece, which was part of the discussion from last year. So, again, the decision that's before you tonight is really whether or not you will initiate this process. If you do not, then the church is able to initiate it. All right, thank you.
Counsel, just if you recall, July twenty-fifth of last year, we had a hearing for a street vacation on Twenty-Fifth Street. And in that report, we talk about the fact that there are two processes that are required. The first one is a street vacation under two seventy-one, one ten, and the second one is a land exchange under two twenty-one, seven twenty-five. So, two processes to initiate. First process, street vacation, and that's the one where in the past, the City Council initiated the street vacation, which alleviates the need for the, like a private party initiated, they would have to obtain consents of the adjoining property owners. And then two twenty-one, seven twenty-five, again, when in an exchange, it's an advertised public hearing, and we would do the exchange for equal or greater value. So, two processes.
Yes, please.
How wide is that street now?
Benefits to the city initiating versus Saint James initiating?
Well, the benefit is to Saint James because they are, they will be relieved of the obligation to go obtain consents. The reason why we did it last time was to take the burden off of them. However, that put the burden on you of paying damages if anybody was to say that their access was damaged by the proposed vacation of the public's interest. And we had some evidence in the record that said there wouldn't be any damages, but again, that's the thing that we could get challenged on. So, we would be the ones accepting the risk. If the property owner is initiating it, then they are placed with the burden to go around and obtain consents of the surrounding property owners. The biggest issue for, I think, the city is that, as the city manager pointed out, we have a fifty-foot right-of-way which touches on our property, not a lot, and we have a twenty-foot easement which is above the fifty-foot right-of-way, which provides a little greater access, but maybe not the code standard that Ron mentioned. So, if I'm looking at this, I'm thinking that's where we might need some improvement, access off of Twenty-Fifth onto our property.
If I might add that, again, we're really, we're really just talking about the initiation part, that if I was sitting in your place, the thing that I would be considering most is, am I helping or harming my ability to develop my own property? And that property, we have discussed about developing in the future. And so, what, as mentioned, of course, greater, equal or greater value in the public's interest. And, but to me, as I look at it, one of the big considerations is that I do not want to put the city at a disadvantage on accessing our property.
The other thing to consider on the issue of initiation is there are application fees for a street vacation. I believe it's eight hundred dollars. We send out notices, there's cost involved. So, this, if the city initiates, then the applicant, the church in this instance, would not have those costs. Also, for some reason, the cost of the appraisals came out of the city attorney budget. I'd like to request that that not happen again.
When we got paid, we just put it into the general fund.
Nothing wrong with that.
Remunaries just go into the slush fund.
Can, can we request some financial assistance with the noticing cost from the church?
I'm going to defer that answer to our attorney. I don't know that you can, I, I'm not anything, aware of anything that would.
Yeah, there's nothing in the, well, there's nothing in the statute that would address that. I mean, there's an eight hundred dollar adopted application fee, but there's no fee adopted for if we initiate it, but we'll do it only if you ask us to.
I believe it's in the public interest that this happened. I can't think of anything more in the public interest than helping the church, especially this one, who serves so many people, meals and clothing and their spiritual needs. So, I think that needed, that hurdle is met, threshold is met, and I want to do whatever I can to move it forward, being sensitive to what you've said in improving our property. You know, we were that close to getting this done, and I'd like to see it continue. I think at some point now, the church has to say, okay, we blew it, now we've got to bite the bullet and finish it up. That's where I come from on that.
So, who initiates it in your opinion?
I'm going to put that on the church. Based on what I've heard, that would seem to be the fair thing to do, because we took that step initially and moved it forward up to the goal line, go with sports metaphors, I apologize, but.
Understand goal lines.
Okay. I didn't mean you didn't. Anyway, so that's where I'm at on that. I don't know where we're at in this discussion. We all had our say. Yes, no? Okay.
Okay. I move to initiate, for the city to initiate the property transfer with Episcopal Parish of Saint James Santiago.
Is that inclusive of the street vacation?
Yes. Thank you.
Second?
Second.
Motion is second, discussion. Are you none, Kate?
Ward?
No.
Yes.
Oakland?
No.
Hinton?
No.
Casper?
No.
Walkie?
Yes.
And Mayor Williams?
I'm going to go now.
Motion fails.
Look for a motion to have Saint James initiate this? I think, I don't think you need a motion for that. That just comes up to them on how they proceed. Okay, great. All right, thank you. All right, then does it then? All right, thank you. All right. Contract awards Southeast Nineteenth, street sidewalk improvement and overlay.
Tonight, we're asking for an award for a construction project for Southeast Nineteenth Street. It's an overlay and some sidewalk improvements, some storm drainage improvements. The street is in pretty bad shape, so we're going to grind out the edges and overlay the entire street up to Lee. We went out for bid, May tenth. On June first, we opened bids. We had only two bids received, one from Devils Lake Rock, one from K&amp;E Excavating. The lowest and responsible bidder was Devils Lake Rock. The amount of their bid is ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars. The project has been approved under the funding source for a street capital replacement fund, and we showed a table of the project costs. We did design this in-house. We try to design our overlays and sidewalk improvements in-house with the assistance of a good survey. So, that's been our approach. The total we're asking for is to award the construction contract to Devils Lake Rock in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars plus a constructed, construction contingency of ten percent, nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine, for a total of a hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars. That's it.
Yes. Well, after three and a half years or three years of looking at this, these are the best ones I've seen. There's no crazy bids in here.
Not, no.
They don't seem to be what you'd expect.
Yeah.
I do have a question. I don't see our engineers estimate on this one.
So, on the spreadsheet, the bid tab attached, the first, yeah, in fact, this isn't labeled correctly. The engineer's estimate is the first total.
Ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-six.
Yes, we were low bid.
Yeah, you ended, that's perfect. Thank you.
Devils Lake Rock, and then the third one is K&amp;E. It just wasn't labeled on the spreadsheet.
Thank you. Great job. Okay. I have one more. Did you, did you do anything to make this come out so well?
No, I promise you that.
Just?
Well, they, a lot of times are, yeah, I mean, this is a typical engineer's estimate. It just happened to come out very close to both of the bids. Yeah.
Motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we, we, the city, award a construction contract to Devils Lake Rock Company in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars with a construction, construction contingency of nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars for a total amount of one hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars.
I second it.
Motion is second, discussion. Are you none, roll call, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Oakland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
And Mayor Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie, I appreciate it. All right. My computer keeps jumping back. All right. Okay, wow, we'll do that. All right. City Manager, City Attorney, report. Nothing from me. There. All right, real good. Actions, if any, based on work session or executive session meetings?
Do you want to report on?
You go right ahead.
Okay. We held the annual evaluation of the city attorney and gave him a favorable score.
Thank you. We did discuss briefly the making sure that you, the two offices get together at least once a week. We would like to see it for an hour-ish, and then also if you could present a report to us. Now, we didn't say how that report would look, if it could be a follow-up in your weekly report, or if council has another suggestion, if Mr. Appicello would like to submit something so we can give versions of the same story, but just so we get something in writing, okay? Thank you very much. Okay. Additional comments from citizens present on non-agenda items? Seeing none. Announcements or comments by City Council?
Okay, I also have something to say. First of all, I just want to talk about that transportation legislation HB 2017. City Manager sent us something about that, and since that email, I attended a Skype chat with Senator Roblin and Representative Gomburg, and so did Counselor Casper and Anderson. So, they might want to add to this. But what I took away from that meeting was that this piece of legislation has seventy percent chance of passing. There are over three hundred pages in the bill, but they suggest if we wanted to, we could parse it out, look at it. They said that although the bill is focused on Portland Metro and Salem, all the real busy areas in the state, but that we shouldn't not support it based on that because the majority of the transportation-related business that goes through those busy areas affect our county and our cities along the coast. And there are other projects in the bill such as the Dundee Bypass. They're looking for funding to complete that. And also, they said that there will be a statement on the gas pumps that state how much of the cost of, the per gallon cost is, of how much Oregon tax that is. And they suggested a number, but I can't remember what it is. It was a small amount of each gallon, so it's not a huge, I have the language, it's like one-half of one percent or even less than that, I can't remember. And they did say that they would like letters of support from us if we're willing to do that. I have the language here somewhere if you want me to find it. Do you care how much that is?
Well, not tonight, but if you could get it, how, two oh seventy, great.
The gas tax?
Yeah.
You drove twelve thousand miles a year, you paid sixteen dollars in gas tax.
Right.
Oh, there you go.
Is that it?
I just want to know if we wanted to send a letter of support, that's.
Oh, absolutely.
And how do we do that if?
If, if you give me the instructions to put the letter together on your behalf, I will do that, and then I'll have the mayor sign it. I see you have nodding up and down.
Yes, please.
Okay, thanks. And I have another one, if I may. Our, the neighborhood that I live in, Rhodes End, is doing an annual Rhodes End Beach cleanup on July fifth, and it's from nine o'clock to one o'clock. So, if anyone is interested in coming, you can sign up on Solve at their website, www.solvoregon.org. The event is sponsored by the Neighborhood Association, Solve, Oregon State Parks, Chinook Winds, and Safeway, and they would very much like the city's support as well. And if we do, we can add our logo to the, to the one with the other ones about all the support that's been given. And I just have one more, if I may, while I have the microphone. I just wanted to follow up on something that Georgia Roloff said. She's come to the City Council meetings and has requested that yellow painting for quite some time. Could we actually get that scheduled?
I will get, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Well, with the question though, is that actually our responsibility and is that something we were going to do anyway? Well, I know Lila has been checking with ODOT on that. If we go through them, it may take even longer, but we do have to get their permission, and I think they were okay with it, but I'll have to verify with Lila on what they, what they said. Okay. Anyone else?
I have.
Go ahead.
I have a few things. Is the southeast Tide Street Dock city, a city park?
It's a city dock.
Okay.
Now, the, there's two parts that you, that are really important to discuss. There's the dock itself, but there's also the path that leads down to it. And now, that path, it's, that is correct, that path is not ADA accessible. And when we budgeted last year to improve that dock, we did not include the improvement of the path.
And is the path on city property?
I, no, I believe it's private property, but we have an easement for it.
Okay. Uh-huh.
So, we have a dock that the public can access at any time. Is it safe? Yes. It's safer now, it's been fixed. Okay, I haven't seen it, that's why I'm asking. Yes. Your attention that. And that's like you should. Go, go see it. The work they did was very, was great.
I really appreciate it. It's really nice, and it's, it looks nice.
But like I said, the, trying to go down the path, you certainly, it is certainly not ADA accessible. But, but yes, the docks, and, yeah, we repaired it because it needed to be repaired. Okay, great.
I think there was reference to the railing, is it?
I think what he was talking, well, the railing along the dock, that was also repaired.
Okay.
I don't believe there's railing going up the path.
There's not, it's.
It's right.
It's, you know, it's bushes and things on both sides, and then once you get to the actual wood dock, it's, you know, I don't know how wide, and there's a handrail on the. I don't know how wide, and there's a handrail on the right east side of it.
And that's a solid handrail?
Yeah, I didn't.
Okay. I use handrails, and I notice when they're not solid. Okay, thank you.
Just, Kate's telling me that the property may include open space land.
Yeah, the walkway goes across open space land. That's at the end of Tide. So the end of Tide Avenue connects to land that the city purchased as open space.
We do own that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. We have had discussions with state parks about parking at Northwest Thirty-Fifth. Had some problems again with motor vehicles driving on the beach at Northwest Thirty-Fifth.
I have get, yes.
Has something been done?
Yeah, Chief Killian has been in contact with the state parks to talk about what we can do about that, but I don't have a report for that tonight.
Okay, but something's been done. Thank you. They, they said they want to, to wait and see what happens in the next year, and I don't want there to be a tragedy there that forces us to do something. I want to solve the problem before that. I wanted to thank people for coming to the meeting. It's always nice to see people in the audience. And I want to invite everyone to Lincoln City's newest festival, the Pixie Fest, which will be held a week and a half from now on June twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, from eleven to seven on Saturday and noon to five on Sunday. For more information, you can go to pixiefest.com. Thank you.
Thank you. By the way, was that the Rose Festival and the parade? It was really a wonderful event. It was ti, it was tiring, but it was wonderful. So last week or our last meeting, we have some, some wonderful kids come and, and talk about plastic bag ban and the Great Pacific Garbage Patch. And we talked about it at the time, got some fun out of it, that, that the council really didn't want to pursue it. But I believe that the council should at least got swept off the table. Let's get it back on the table. It was represented, Noah dispelled the fact that there's a Great Pacific Garbage Patch. And here's the front page on that from Noah. It says garbage, the Great Pacific Garbage Patch. You can get a, an audio on that on your computer by simply typing in Google, Making Waves, Episode One Twenty-Six. You'll have a representative from Noah telling you what a horrible disaster it is. So it's, it's very easily researchable, and I can provide copies or give you websites, address of Noah, who repeatedly comes out and saying the massive loss of wildlife over this, several garbage patches, actually. So I'll leave it at that. It's not to, it's not going to cause any job loss in Lincoln City. We don't have anything that's plastic bag related in our economy. And, you know, the, the idea that, you know, everybody can make their own decisions. You know, we're a nation of laws, and you don't make your own decisions on many things where people, other people can get hurt. You don't get to go and drive in the highway and you decide how fast you're going to go. We have laws, and the laws are to protect people and property outside of ourselves. So with that, I would really like to see if the, the council had any intentions at all or would like any inclinations at all to take this off the floor and put it back on the table for some consideration. So maybe our staff can look and, and take a neutral view.
I'm always up for discussions as long as, you know, we have a, a reasoned debate about it. You know, because there are some serious con activity or con reasons for not doing it. Studies I've read out of Seattle after they passed it, and the issues they had, so I'm more than, I'd be interested in having a discussion. It's just, I think when it's just thrown up as an emotion, as a motion without a kind of discussion or input, I, I don't think it's, it's wise, but I'm, I'm up for discussion. I mean, I'm looking at the Noah page you're citing right here. The name Pacific Garbage Patch has led many to believe that this area is large, a continuous patch of easily visible marine debris, blah, blah, blah.
No, it's not blah, blah, blah.
Well, it is. There's a whole lot.
Blah, blah, blah.
Okay, then I'll finish reading everything. Patch of easily visible marine debris items such as bottles and other litter akin to literal island of trash. It should be visible with satellite aerial photographs. So that was what blah, blah, blah was. While higher concentrations of litter can be found in the area along with the debris such as derelict fishing nets, much of the debris is actual small pieces of floating plastic that are not immediately evident to the naked eye. So that's what I was discussing, and it was from Noah's website that I was reading about the misnomer that there is.
Well, it's not what you read, it's what you didn't read.
I read it verbatim at the last meeting. I read from there, but verbatim.
There is, two solid pages.
So, so can we have, I think the question on the table, the question on the table is, you know, whether you want to do a work session or whatever for some discussion.
Let's, let's have the, the.
Talk about it.
You know, Kate, get it, get us so we can have a discussion about it. It's important enough to have a discussion about it.
Can I make an input? This newsletter that we were talking about putting out from the city, quarterly or monthly, whatever it was, would it be appropriate at that time to have like a monkey survey where citizens could report in if, if they have any, see how they feel about it?
I, I just don't want to stop the process.
Right.
Or, or maybe, maybe it, it is all a bunch of hooey, but I think it deserves the council's attention. It's important enough that we should look at both sides of it and, and make our own evaluation and nothing nearly as quickly as we did a couple of weeks ago.
I agree.
May I? Could we, could we ask staff to ask other cities that have gone through this process to see what their pitfalls were and the things that came out of it?
Sure. All, all I really need from you is a go forward and start devoting staff time to the research. And any suggestions that you have on that research, please send them my way, and we'll happily incorporate it. But really what I need from you is that if you want to have this as a discussion, say so, and then we'll devote the staff time to begin looking at it.
I don't want any staff time devoted to it. I'm willing to have the discussion, but I don't know how many, how much city resources I want to spend discussing something we've already said we don't want.
If I may, I think it would be helpful to find out from the other cities what pitfalls there were. I mean, people vote yes, they vote no, and there are reasons for that. It might be real help.
Feel free. Call them up. I just, we've already got a staff that we've admitted is overworked. They've already got so much on their plate now, and we're saying, here, do this now, too.
Didn't say do it tomorrow.
Dedicated and so loyal that they will just jump right on it, and.
I didn't say tomorrow.
Okay, well, Ron is on top of things. He, he doesn't hesitate.
Oh, we can provide it.
Okay, so.
For, for me, I'm, I'm a little troubled by process, if I can. I think it was last meeting this came up, and same discussion. We asked, the question was asked whether you wanted a work session or not, and the council as a whole decided no for the same thing. And it just seems, you know, like there ought to be a rest period, you know, whether a year or more than a week, two weeks, to, to bring back and try to flip-flop a decision. So I, I don't know if we have council rules, but it just seems a little bit, you know, we, we could beat something to death, not getting your way, so to speak, of keep bringing it back to a council. So, you know, I'm, I'm fine with a work session. I think, you know, I'm concerned, as the mayor just indicated, you know, would, I wish we'd spend as much time on housing, quite frankly. And if I wanted to devote, devote staff, that's where I'd be devoting them.
Well, now, wait a minute. I mean, how much time, staff time, did you take up regarding chickens? I, I think this has really serious implications for, you know, global health of our seas. And I think it's more than, it's worth more than a misquote from Noah and a bunch of thought that took thirty seconds, a minute. I mean, it was very short, and we all laughed, and, and down it goes. I think, I think the oceans are important enough to spend some real time and a little staff resources to get, to see if we can participate.
And I'm sure you do. That's why you brought it up again. I'm just questioning when a decision is made, you know, that there ought to be a resting period. So that's all, and you're, you're fine. You know, I'm, I'm with you. I'm willing to have a, a work session. It just seems, this seemed like a good opportunity to raise a question that we may be getting into as a council. You know, if you don't, you know, a decision made, so bring it back a week later. And I just, I don't know if that's proper. I'm sure we can and will, but it just seems a little wearing.
I just double-checked. We, we can. I mean, Robert's Rules allow, you can do it. But council can also make up rules that say, if it fails, don't bring it up for thirty days, sixty days, ninety. We can, we, we have that option, but as Robert's Rules of Order sits right now, you can bring it up. You just can't reintroduce it that meeting. Yeah, so, okay.
Well, what's the feeling of everybody here besides you? Am I, am I the Lone Ranger again?
If I may, I'd make a motion. Does it need to be a motion?
Good say.
Yeah, I think we're just like, so just give a yes if you want, did I?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Nope, no. So you've got five yeses and two noes. So we'll talk about it later. Anything else, Mr. Ward?
That'll be it.
Okay. Anyone else?
I do.
Okay.
If, as I understand, I had somebody call me and talk to me about water hookups and water fees. And as I understand it, and Mr. Townsend's here, and he said he spoke with Mr. Chandler, Mr. Townsend, about the, the two ways in which water is paid for, I guess. So there was, there's no property on the lot, and they're paying monthly fees. And the option was, well, disconnect it, and then if you want to build, then there's the charges to re-hook, hook up, or pay the monthly fees for nothing. The question is, is that, is that the only two options that we could provide for individuals? Because there are probably more than just one lot that does not have a building or has no intent on the building, but has the meter or, you know, whatever the fees associated with that very large hookup charge are that are in place. So I was just trying to see if there's a middle ground between, you know, paying for absolutely nothing or not, you know, I don't know what the process is to take everything out, or would you do or leave it? You know, I'm not familiar with that whole thing. So it just as a way to, you know, mitigate that, those two, you know, extremes.
Let me give a little bit more information, if that's okay. This is something that the planning, the public works department, and I, and finance department have all tried to figure out, and we have not been able to come up with a good solution for it. As long as there is a meter on your property, you're charged a rate. You're charged the minimum rate. Doesn't matter if you use water or not. We don't allow people to just simply disconnect and then reconnect. And the way we avoid that is that if you disconnect your service, and then you want to reconnect it at a later date, we then charge you for the systems development charge. And it's a very, very big deterrent. There's several reasons that we have, we have two primary reasons. There's several reasons, but there's two primary reasons that we have done that. The first is that we have a lot of second homes, and we have certain, we have to have a certain revenue flow or cash flow coming in to make our bills if, you know, a third of your housing stock is second homes. You had people who were disconnecting but only reconnecting it just for a short period of time during the summer, your rates would have to go up very, very much to compensate for that. The second is, and this is something I've just recently come to learn, is that systems development charges do not run with the land, and they're not indefinite in their use. So if somebody pays for a systems development charge, and then they pull their meter, it doesn't mean that that, that property continues to be able to say, I've, I've paid my systems development charge. It's, it's not an indefinite, and Stephanie can explain it much better than I have. So the problem that we have been faced with, and it's come from one individual, and he's been very patient, and I'm actually really quite glad that he contacted Councilor Hoagland because we've quite frankly been stumped on this. He has a home, or I mean, he has a lot that at one time had a house on it and does not anymore. It's a vacant lot. And he is not using any water associated with dwelling or associated with gardening or with farming it or what other type of use. But he does not want to have the meter taken out because he would then have to pay for the systems development charge to hook back up. Now, because of that, he is paying a monthly charge. He's, he has asked us to see if there's a way in which there could be a distinction between a lot that has a building on it and has to have that charge remain, or one like his property which is essentially vacant. And every time we've tried to look at this, we have run into this problem of the very unique nature of our community and the effects that it could have. So at this point in time, the staff is kind of stumped on this one. And I've looked back and researched on what for the previous administration has done because they looked at it as well and found that they came to the same conclusion that we did, that they were just a stump. And so it stayed that way. So I, you know, we're happy to keep looking, and I do think we owe this gentleman a, an answer of either we can't or here's how we can, but we haven't been able to figure out a solution for it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I also have some more things.
Okay.
But if you.
I guess so, the issue is, how do we resolve something like that, or how do we get into assisting? I sense, besides the explanation, you're also asking for help, Mr. Chandler.
A little bit.
Ideas?
I guess what I'd really like to do on this, now that it's come to your attention, is to have an opportunity either in a work meeting or in one of our city council meetings to discuss our policy much more in detail. And then we can give you information on how widespread it is, how many properties it may or may not affect, the purposes for systems development charges. Like I said, I just recently learned that they don't continue. And so I think what we'd really like to do is just have more of a discussion with you. And it, we may end up at a point saying, we can't make, we can't accommodate this. But I do think his request sounds reasonable on its face, but I, like I said, we'd like to have further discussion with you.
Yeah, it was.
If you want to comment on that, I have more things.
Okay, it's just kind of related, maybe when we have that discussion about the meter and how to charge, could we also have a discussion about LEDs and how we?
True. Again, people are asking me about the quantity of sidewalk, painted sidewalk crossings in that between northeast, you know, Fourteenth and northeast, I don't know, Seventeenth or Eighteenth, others, Eleven or Eight, I don't know the number, and, you know, what we can do, or is that necessary? And it's such a hindrance, and people almost get hit a lot, and so it was, it was brought to me about the dangers of that.
The complaint is too many?
Correct. There was some signage or a quote from Thomas Jefferson or something in the building that was removed and not replaced. On the, yeah, yeah, in the stairwell, yeah. I'd like to see something like that. There's a beach lodging sign at Southwest Thirty-Fifth that looks like all the rest of our Pearls signs, and it's not. It just simply says beach lodging, and so I don't know how that was made to look like our standout things. And had questions on that, and I didn't, I didn't have any answers for that. Northwest Seventeenth, I think, the, the light pole, there's, looks to be a camera on that. And we, they're wondering what that is, if it is a camera or not. And likewise, on the fourth floor of this building facing north, looking down 101, there's another camera.
It's actually, it's actually a mirror.
Oh, okay.
And that's someone our guys are, we've had occasions, it's been a long time, but we had occasions where I actually had somebody who was staying up on that area. That allows our employees to see if somebody's up on that fourth floor stairwell.
Looks like, yeah, cool. And then I ran into like programs like Surf Rider, Oceana, and then the. And then I ran into like programs like Surf Rider, Oceana, and then the American Shore and Beach Preservation Association, and I was just curious as if we're involved in any kind of beach preservation or restoration, you know, things like that as the city itself? Is it involved in things like that? And if so, you know, what capacity and what have we been doing to that? In the, I did not see any participation for Oceana. Surf Rider has, I think Cus Bay is one, the American Shore and Beach Preservation. There's only two, two locations on the West Coast, and that was in California, like Southern California. So, I don't know other organizations or things that we can be stewards to, you know, good environment and stuff like that, that we can be a part of, since we have so, you know, very significant part of Lincoln City is beaches and the ocean. So, I just would like to see our involvement and, you know, becoming a member if possible or anything that that would take. So, that's it.
Anybody else? Okay, my turn. Want to just mention I was at the Rose?
All right, sorry. I do have one more, if I may. Oregon Rain is a regional accelerator innovation network. It is for entrepreneurs and startup companies. They provide, the city of Lincoln City is involved with them directly, have been, you know, funding it, Toledo, Newport. On June 21st is their, what they're calling Demo Day, and it's the Midcoast's first ever pre-accelerator program for startup companies located between Lincoln City and Florence. There's 11 companies that are going to be a part of it. The companies will take stage to pitch their businesses, business opportunities, show how the, the organization Rain has helped them accelerate over the last 12 weeks. And also for those that are entrepreneurs that would like to be mentors or entrepreneurs that are just starting or startup companies, it's a great opportunity to be a part of that and learn what it would actually take. There's most, the most, the greatest increase in net jobs have been through entrepreneurs. So, it's a wonderful opportunity, and Oregon has a, a lot of entrepreneurs, and so this organization is in conjunction with SBDC with Dave Price and all that. So, I just would like to put that out there for June 21st at the Florence Event Center from 5:00 to 8:30 PM.
Okay. All right. Was able to join the Oregon mayors and Portland Mayor Ted Wheeler in the annual Mayor's March. That was a, a fun part of the parade. I'm sorry I didn't get to march with the Lincoln City float, but I heard it was well-received and, and a lot of fun. Had a great time just walking and talking with the different mayors and got a chat at a lunch about issues they're facing, and it's, it's fun to know that I'm not alone. And we can, we have each other to commiserate with at times. I'll be cooking dinner tomorrow night at Faith Baptist Church for Celebrate Recovery. That starts at 6:00 PM. If you know anyone who needs a, a hot meal and maybe some help with addiction issues, we're there for them. Want to wish everyone who qualifies a happy Father's Day this week. On Wednesday, this Wednesday, which will be the 14th, yeah, down at my building, 1206 Southeast 48th, we'll be welcoming a man named Micah Tuttle, who's been a missionary for the last 10 years in the jungles of Peru. And he has just some really fascinating footage about raising six children in, in the jungles of Peru. So, you're all invited to that. I have a question to Mr. Avicello, or maybe Mr. Chandler could answer. Graffiti, I've been seeing more and more, and I'm seeing it lasting longer and longer, and I'm wondering if one of you could talk to, what is our policy on graffiti?
Generally, graffiti is treated as criminal mischief under the state statutes. I believe it's a Class C misdemeanor. There's also a violation, possession of graffiti instruments, if they catch you with a backpack full of spray paint, kind of. And I know there's community services associated with that offense. I've prosecuted it in the past. I don't know that the city does anything other than if it's our facility that's been vandalized, I'm sure our crews go out and paint over the graffiti. If it's private parties, then the police would address restitution through the criminal prosecution.
Okay, so we have no ordinance requiring people to clean it up on their own property?
Well, we have, we have codes on property maintenance, so I imagine we could take a code enforcement angle there and say, you know, your, your property is not meeting the property maintenance code, and we'd probably work with them to get it cleaned up if it was private property.
Yeah, I, I'm thinking of one building that I see. It's been, I'll guarantee it's been there a year, but, and I don't want to be the police arm, obviously, but I see more and more, and I want to make sure we're kind of, have a way to address it. I don't know how council feels, but it's something I'd like to start paying attention to.
Mr. Mayor, there's, there's one city I know of that has an ordinance that wherever the graffiti is, it must be painted over within 48 hours.
Yeah, I've seen that too.
Yeah.
I think Portland's is 24 hours. And that, but they also have a graffiti team made up of volunteers and one staff person that oversees the volunteers to identify where the spots are, and then they go out and paint it.
Southeast Portland. I feel so bad for the property owners out there.
Really hard to keep up with.
Yeah. But anyway, I just wanted to touch on that.
But I would like to say, though, that just through the experience in Portland, that their, the person that oversees the graffiti removal team, she said that you need to get it immediately, and you need to keep after it, or it'll just continue to grow, because you get the different people saying, well, mine's, I'm going to put it there.
Sure thing, okay.
So, you have to, you have to keep after it.
And then, gosh, it's been a year or so we passed our, what we call the panhandling ordinance, but I'm starting to see more people pop up. And I think I asked you, Ron, if we provided business owners with some kind of verbiage that they could put on a sign, or if there's a way. Do we have our own sign-making facility for the city? Or do we contract that out?
We contract that.
Okay.
I know that the language for the sign was circulating between Public Works and Police Department staff, so in terms of our, our transfer ordinance. So, I know that the signs are being talked about.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to see something offered to these local businesses that say, here, put this up before your customers get to these people and save them some trouble. Other than that, I don't think I have a whole lot.
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry. We had a gentleman who wanted to speak and missed his time because we moved so quickly. I'm so sorry.
My name's Robert Thomas, and I spoke a couple, well, it was a couple of sessions back to council, and I live at 2216 Southwest Bard Road. And I talk to Stephanie once in a while about, you know, this year's budget and one thing or another. And, and tonight we were talking about LID programs and how to finance and, you know, tax the situation. And I, I have, about 15 years ago, I made a circular driveway. My house isn't much, but I made a circular driveway on, on my property, and then I bought another lot. So, I have 300 feet on Bard Road. And about that same time, Jim Drayton has about 300 feet when you go, when you go off the blacktop, you know, on, on the gravel on Bard Road. So, between the two of us, we have 600, 600 feet on the road. And the housing along there is kind of rough, and I know the septic tanks aren't the greatest in the world, and, you know, people have trouble selling three or four of them, selling their property with the way things are probably set up. And the thing is that there's a tremendous potential on Bard Road, or only a mile and a half, you know, for, from the city. And I want to sell my property to a contractor, and the condition of my house and, and everything else, it's pretty, I'm 74 years old, and I, I have a trouble just selling it, period. You know, the house, it's a one-bedroom house, it's 650 square feet, there's only one door, you know, just, it just has a front door, so it won't finance with a bank. And I bought the house 20 years ago, in the early 90s. My dad retired, I took care of him, moved from Seattle down here, he did. And the, I, I knew the house wasn't, but I liked the location. The location's great. You know, you have these other apartment complexes around, but they're, they're too far away from the beach, you know? And in the meantime, we've had Olivia Beach built up down below. We've got Olivia Beach built up on top of the hill. We've got the two little park situations that can be, they're roughed out, but they can be improved on. And if somebody put in a big housing complex, took over my setup in, in Drayton, Jim Drayton and I are friends, and I mean, that would, that would, the other little houses along there, and they just doze those or just, you know, move them someplace, including mine. There's about three of them, they just move them off someplace, and that'd be the end of it. And I'm sure that would happen, because you're close to this, you know, you're close to the factory stores, you got every, you can, you know, you can be in a wheelchair and make it down to Columbia Bank, you know? And it's just, it's, it's just, it's a bomb ready to explode, it's from, from a positive standpoint. It's close to the city, it's paying your water bill and everything. And so, my, my thinking is, is that with a, with a, it needs to be, it's been put off for years, and, and part of it's been, part of it's been other things for the cities or more in priorities for the city, and part of it's been the economy, economy, but right now, the construction's up, you know, nationwide, and the, the general outlook for the future for the country is good, and, and the construction is on a 12-year high right now. And these, these expenses that you have, if I sold, if I could sell my property and, to a contractor, something, I, it would like, if there was 12, 12-unit, say if, say if it was a 12-unit situation, I, I, where I personally live with my circular driveway, I had to build out with a lot of, a lot of concrete and everything. I could put, you could put a, a, two, you could put four units in there, two above two, maybe a ground-level parking.
Robert, I'm going to, I'm going to have to interrupt you there, but thank you for bringing it to our attention and...
But I mean, that's, you know, you could probably finance the, you know, an LID with, with, along there and get, get a big player, you know, for, you know, I could get somebody that would, would, would maybe cash me out and then cash out a neighbor across the street. You could have that filled in there, because it, the summer, you know, the summer traffic and everything is, you know...
Thanks, Robert. Appreciate it.
So, I can look specifics, but I mean, it's just, you know, I need something done there, and I'm 74 years old.
Keep us in the loop. All right. Thanks, Robert. Appreciate it. Anything else? Anybody? All right, with that, may God bless you all, and may God bless Lincoln City. We are adjourned. Mics are off.